This is the Commissioner meeting of September 11th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Director Space.
Here.
Deputy Director Carney.
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
Commissioner Schick.
Here.
A moment of silence and salute to the flag. I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of all the first responders and individuals who passed away as a result of the attacks on our nation on September 11th, 2001. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four, public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, oops, I'm reading that again, sorry, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald/Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. We have two changes to tonight's agenda. Items 14A and 14M will be voted on separately and individually. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, Commissioner, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number six, we have no proclamations, we have no public hearing. Public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Okay, can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, a second from Commissioner DeGroot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries. The floor is open. Okay.
Hi, Stephanie Whipple, Handover Township. I can see your new timing device up there.
Nice.
Does that mean the people can hear now?
Yes.
Yeah, well done, thank you. I noticed that Dennis Library is on your agenda tonight. And my question is, has the real estate transfer taken place for the county to take ownerships of the building and the grounds from the Newton Library Association?
Yes, please.
Everything, the county has sent the closing attorneys all the information that they requested. We're waiting on the closing attorney to, to set up that closing date. It's all on the library's attorneys' process now. We've done all our due diligence, everything's done. We're ready. We're just waiting on them.
Any idea when that might happen?
No, not at all.
What can be done to speed that up?
Oh, you can call them. We bug them every day.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, thank you for the motion that's later in the agenda regarding the architectural engineering contract for the Dennis Library. So I can see what you're doing.
Yes, we're doing our part.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I also want to say thank you for moving ahead with, you know, with the Dennis Library. We're very excited and we're really impatient because it's taking a long time. And so thank you for that. And thank you for this. We should sing a song.
Yeah.
I also had a question about another resolution from the senior citizens, the single residence transportation assistance program, which is the, it's good jurisdiction.
Correct.
It's a better resolution. And anyway, grant upon the transit onto the event pilot program through December and so on and so forth, and it's additional funding. And so the county is looking, looking to get additional funding and provide additional transportation for those?
I think we've already, it's being awarded, we're getting the funding and we're going to provide more transportation.
Okay, and that's wonderful. And that's what, what is that going to do exactly?
It's just more, more ability for transportation, for seniors, for scheduling, for going to, whatever their needs are, and it gives us more funding to provide that. So I think for medical or for groceries or wherever they, whatever their schedules are.
That's.
For voting, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really wonderful. So I'm really happy that you're doing that. Is there any connection between that and Newton Hospital, by any chance, by the Medical Center?
Only if they have a schedule to go to Newton Hospital, yeah. If they have to go to the hospital for whatever reason, for a doctor's appointment, they can schedule that through transit as well. It's not a hospital function, it's a transit, transit function.
Okay, all right, good to know. All right, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meanwhile, if we make some phone calls and say.
Right.
Yeah, keep us, keep us posted how you make out. You have our emails.
Can you just state your name and municipality?
I'm really sorry.
Well, I'm using your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Agenda topics only? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number nine, commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. From the Sussex County Library System, we know in this tough time of businesses, Newton, New Jersey, the Sussex County Library System will have a workshop for business owners and individuals looking to expand their customer base and boost sales. Are invited to attend an upcoming lunch and learn session hosted by the Sussex County Library System. DataAxle representatives will provide hands-on training on reference solutions, consumer and business database. Learn how to use this tool to target specific audiences most likely to be interested in your products or services. This database is available for free through the library, transforms data into actionable insights to grow your business. Attendees will also enjoy a complimentary lunch catered by Hay Axe Market. We're excited to host this lunch and learn with DataAxle. Reference solutions is a valuable resource for businesses looking to grow without the high cost of market research, said Luis, Luisa Ben, head of Adult Services at Sussex County Library System. This event is a great opportunity for business owners to learn how to use the library resources effectively. So the title of this event is the Lunch and Learn Tools for Expanding Your Business. It is at the Main Library, 125 Morris Turnpike, Thursday, October 10th, between 10:30 and 2:00, and the cost of this is free, so everybody should attend. If it has a business, this may help you. And you can contact the, the library through the main site, events, or 973-948-3660. And it is also Celebrate Your Library Card Sign Up Month with the Sussex County Library System. If you don't have a card, get a card. September is Library Card Sign Up Month, and the Sussex County Library System invites the community to join the celebration. Get, use, show off your library card this month to win library swag. Three ways to win: Get a library card, sign up for the new library card during September, and get some library swag. Use your library card. Every time you use your card in September, you'll be automatically entered into a weekly drawing for a chance to win a full global Sussex County Library System tote, or a 40-ounce water bottle with reusable straw, or share your library hall. Post a photo of a book or other library item you've enjoyed, tag the Sussex County Lib, or email it to Sussex Social at Sussex County Library, and you'll be entered to an Sussex County Canvas Book Tote filled with books. One grand prize winner will be selected in October. And that's all I have.
Nice. Commissioner Schick?
Thank you, Director. Deputy Director Carney and I attended a Fire Academy meeting, and we discussed a number of things regarding funding, you know, possibilities of, of new training, and some of their wants and needs. It is one of the first meetings that we've had with them, and we have a couple more to follow up with. So I want to say that we left there in a very positive mindset, and all very happily working together towards all the goals that they have on their want and needs list. And then we attended the Newton Housing Authority rededication for a 50-year anniversary of that building, and had the wonderful opportunity to celebrate a birthday of a resident who is 107 years young. And Senator Space presented a citation to this birthday girl. So the rest, pretty much for me was, all of my liaisons had a holiday schedule, so that's about it for me, as far as Commissioner comments.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot.
Yes, to start, I'm delighted to report that we had our first donation of seeds for the county seed library. Huge thank you to our own Lorraine Karen and all our dedicated senior service workers for acquiring and organizing the seeds. We are currently in the initial phase of the project, focusing on gathering our seed supply from September to December. This is a really fantastic start, and I'm confident with Lorraine Karen's help and everyone's continued efforts, we'll keep this momentum going strong. As always, I'll keep the board and public updated on more to come. For the Division of Health, there will be a Child Health Clinic and Adult Health Clinic Tuesday, September 24th. The Child Health Clinic will be from 10 to 12, and the Adult Health Clinic will be from 2 to 4. Additionally, a Woman's Health Clinic will be held September 19th from 4:30 to 7:30 PM. All clinics will be at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. Call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. From the Office of Mosquito Control, 320 pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for mosquito-borne disease testing. A total of 16 pools have tested positive for West Nile virus in 10 municipalities during 2024. The Office of Mosquito Control will continue to treat and test areas as such. And additionally, I know that we're going to be mentioning Sussex County Day, but the Office of Mosquito Control this year is going to be bringing out their mosquito mascot, Miss Kido. I thought, I thought it was pretty good, I thought it was pretty good, right? So Miss Kido will be at the mosquito booth assisting in education of Sussex County residents on mosquito biology and control. She will also be giving out spotted, spotted lanternfly traps to Sussex County residents. So yeah, should be an exciting time. I'll be sure to stop in. Aside that, attended Hardeston Day, got moved from Saturday to Sunday. Great time, great group of people out in Hardeston, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you. Department of Engineering and Planning, annual, annual sign replacements. Each spring, the Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety inspects functionality of all signs maintained by Sussex County. The annual program includes in-person inspection of over 14,000 signs. This year's inspection program identified 548 signs with functional deficiencies requiring replacement of a sign. Replacement work orders were issued to the sign crew, and to date, crew has replaced 307 of the 548 different signs. Work is expected to be completed in October. Annual Sign Nighttime Reflectivity Inspection Program, so I think we talked about in the past, we have to put new reflective paint on the roads for the self-driving cars, get home safe. So this is a part of that program that we've been working on, which is very expensive, by the way. The Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety implements a nighttime sign reflectivity inspection program. The program provides compliance with the Federal Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices for Streets and Highways Sign Reflectivity Standards. Signs identified which, which preform below the standard will be scheduled for replacement. This year's inspection program is scheduled to begin in October. DPW In-House Crack Sealing Program. Crack sealing is the pavement maintenance strategy incorporated with the county's pavement management program. Ceiling of cracks in asphalt pavement reduces intrusion of water, minimizes freeze thaw damage on roadway. This year's program included a combination of contracted services, as well as operating a dedicated DPW crew tasked with performing the work. The BPW Run Program utilizes rented equipment operated by skilled crew staff with the DPW employees. Crack sealing work is coordinated with the annual restriping program and a resurfacing program as well. Roads are evaluated internally based upon age and condition. Roads exhibiting stress cracks are prioritized within the annual program and sealed as resources permit. We like to do Beaver Run Road. Sussex County Bridge Q06. The Bridge Q06, replacement bridge on Main Street in Sparta, which is a bit of a nuisance if you've been traveling through there, I know I ran into it myself, but the temporary pedestrian bridge, safety fencing, and lighting have been installed, and the contractor will be removing the existing bridge act this week, which is done already because I went past there. And once the existing bridge is completed, demolished, the contractor will start driving the sheet piling, and work on the sheet piling will be next week. Sussex County Bridge D38, the Bridge D38 replacement on 519 Frankfurt is also progressing. The contractor's completed driving the piles, and has poured the footings for the bridge. The precast concrete frame sections are scheduled to be delivered and set on Tuesday, September 17th, Mayor. Planning staff from the Division of Planning will be joined by NJTPA Project Consultant at Sussex County Day. So it looks like they'll have a lot of people over there. Project team will be soliciting input from the public that will help shape development of the Sussex County Local Roadway Safety Action Plan. Team members will be available to review the project, discuss the benefits of local safety roadway action plan, and asking the public to share observations and concerns related to the operational safety of roadways within Sussex County. Message from our county clerk, in his words, pursuant to our conversation on Thursday, September 5th, 24, please line in close, August Review Report, I'm pleased to share that the revenue for the month of August 24 is $5,452,056 higher than that of August of '23. Again, goes to show that houses are still being sold, but just at a higher cost. So the people with more money than me are buying houses. Current revenue for fiscal year '24, ending August 31st, '24, is $1,926,979.69. As mentioned to the Board of Commissioners in June '24, it was my opinion that the Federal Reserve would reduce interest rates in the month of September. I still believe that midsummer, the Fed will reduce the rate by half percent, base points with hopes of helping the economy to recover. Inflation is silent, killer in the middle class. Property Alert Systems, as of August, was 49, to date is 1,230. Daniel's Law participants in August were 13, and to date is 629. So I don't know if you guys have been paying attention to the news or not, but there was a shooting in Wayne, New Jersey. I've called for this, and I'm going to call it one more time. I might call it more than one more time, to be honest with you. The need for armed security guards in our schools in Sussex County. You know, this is a nonpartisan issue. I, you know, kid's safety is, is very important, especially us who have kids or grandkids or nephews and nieces. And I've called on Sussex County Superintendent Gail Carrick to do something about this, and she basically told me her hands were tied. Not in her words, but in my words, it's very, very important that we have armed security guards in our schools. You know, if it's too late, it's too late, and we're going to regret that. So I said it before, I'm going to say it again. Mark my words, we're going to need that. As Earl said, we, we did attend the 50th anniversary, the woman, I don't even know if she was 107 years old, but she was peppy. She didn't look 107, she looked 97, but she didn't look 107, which, which is great, a great, really, good, good, good job by those guys. And I just want to read just a little remark about the issue we had with Diamond Ship, and not, not that we had an issue at all, just a lot of people have been, you know, talking, we've been getting emails, and sometimes people have their opinions based on their heart. We're not elected to have an opinion with our heart, we have to use our head for all the constituents in Sussex County. And, and whether I want a warehouse, don't want a warehouse, it makes no difference, we still have to do our job. So with that being said, on my phone, it is my phone, apologize. So Diamond Ship, the PAC has not received any formal correspondence or information from the NJDEP regarding any claims made in recent news articles. I can confirm that the application was modified at the direction of comments and correspondence received from the NJDEP specifically regarding the two regulations in question. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Division of Community and Youth Services, Office of Transit, Sussex County Transportation, Annual Public Hearing. The Sussex, Sussex County will be holding its annual transportation public hearing virtually via Zoom with a call-in option at 12:00 PM on Thursday, September 19th, 2024. This is an opportunity for Sussex County residents to voice their transportation needs, as well as share suggestions for service improvements. Public participation is critical to the ongoing success of our transit system. For additional information, contact Nick Kapitakas, Transit Director, at 973-940-5200, extension 1287, or email nkapitakas@sussex nj.us. Division of Senior Services, 15th Annual Healthy Living Festival. The Division of Senior Services will host the 15th Annual Healthy Living Festival at United Methodist Communities at Bristol Glen, located at 200 Bristol Glen Drive in Newton, on Friday, September 20th, 2024, from 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM. Seniors are invited to participate in complimentary health screenings and educational presentations sponsored by a variety of healthcare providers. A luncheon will follow the event. To register or obtain additional information about this event, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Center for Lifelong Learning at SCCC. The Center for Lifelong Learning, a collaboration between the Division of Senior Services and Sussex County Community College, SCCC, is hosting a free art class during the fall semester. SCCC Fine Arts Professor Michael Hughes will teach a five-part Basic Introduction to Drawing class. The class will meet on five Saturdays, September 21st, 28th, October 5th, October 12th, October 19th, at 10:00 AM, in the art gallery, room C106, located by the entrance to the B Building. The course fee is $30. Students are required to bring their own basic drawing supplies. Pre-registration is required and space is limited. To pre-register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services by calling 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Sussex County Community College Open Computer Lab. The Open Computer Lab at Sussex County Community College is available free to Sussex County seniors during the fall semester to enhance their computer literacy skills. For additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Sussex County Day, Sussex County Fairgrounds, Augusta, New Jersey. The Divisions of Community and Youth Services, Health, Senior Services, Social Services, and the Office of Transit will be represented during Sussex County Day on Sunday, September 15th, 2024, at the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. The divisions will have a wealth of information available to share with the visitors about the various programs and services available to Sussex County residents, in addition to giveaways and educational meetings. Staff will also be available to answer questions, and I believe that's from 12 to 4 this Saturday. And I want to thank all our county employees that give up their time on the weekend to come out for that. Sunday, sorry, Sunday, wrong day. Saturday is Vernon Street Fair, Sunday is Sussex County Day. Okay, since we have had, it's been three weeks since we had a meeting. It's been a while, it seems like it was forever ago. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot and I attended the Boots Bourbon BBQ in support of the Sussex County Fairgrounds. It was a great night with a great entertainment and food. And then I attended on this Saturday a flag retiring ceremony at the cemetery at Northwest New Jersey Veteran Cemetery, sponsored by SCUMA, who partnered with Abbey Glen Cemetery. They retired properly 1,000 pounds of American flags that would be cremated at Abbey Glen. Then they handed out ashes from last year's flags to sprinkle on the graves of the veterans. And I attended that actually with Lafayette Mayor Alan Henderson, who's here. And Alan had the opportunity to sprinkle the ashes on his former colleague, the police chief Brett Alamy. So that was pretty special. I also attended this week the 2024 Partners for Caring Bag for Hunger at Newton ShopRite, where customers were giving donations when they were checking out, and they let us, some of them let us, bag their groceries. Most people these days like to bag their own. But it was a great event, and I attended it with the county clerk and Sheriff Strata. It was really nice, well-attended, and hopefully they made a lot of money and collected a lot of food. And I attended the Chamber of Commerce Business Breakfast this morning, and we had a nice presentation, yesterday morning, a nice presentation from Bristol Glen, and I urge all business owners and any community organizations and our municipalities to all join the Chamber of Commerce. It's very helpful. And I attended the Liberty Towers Celebration yesterday, and the 107th birthday. And when I saw that she was 107, I'm like, wait a minute, maybe that's just the typo that they sent to us. But no, she was born in 1917. Her actual birthday was May 17th, so they were just celebrating it all together. So just, she was incredible. We were all impressed. And then this morning, I attended a very heartwarming tribute to 9/11 at the college. I know we all remember where we were the day that the world stood still from those awful attacks. And the, the theme of the speeches this, today, were mostly in September 12th, and we need to come back to that world where everyone's united and move forward. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Director?
Yes.
Can we just add about the mayor's meeting?
Yes, and, and we, yes, we've, since we have two mayors here, we do have a mayor's meeting coming up, and that is not open to the public, but it's a way for us to hear what the mayors have to say, and what they're doing, and what we're doing, and that is September 21st that we're hosting that. And only two commissioners can attend things where county business is spoken or were a quorum. So I'm attending along with Deputy Director Carney. So that's coming up, so we're looking forward to that. Okay. Number 10, approval of consent agenda. There is none. Number 11, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of August 21st, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of August 21st, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden with a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number 12, we have an ordinance, A, introduction for first reading, Ordinance 24-06, capital ordinance, amending capital ordinance, number 22-05, which provides for certain capital improvements at the Sussex County Career and Technical High School, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on April 6th, 2022, to amend the improvements authorized therein. Motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with the notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on September 25th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, prior to final adoption of the ordinance. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, B, introduction for first reading, Ordinance 24-07, bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance, number 18-1, which provides for various 2018 capital improvements, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, now county commissioners, of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on March 28th, 2018, as previously amended to amend the description set forth therein. Motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with the notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on September 25th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, prior to final adoption of the ordinance. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, C, introduction for first reading, Ordinance 24-08, bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance, number 21-07, which reappropriates excess bond proceeds to provide for various capital improvements, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on July 28th, 2021, to amend the description set forth therein. Motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advise this ordinance as introduced for first reading, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with the notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on September 25th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, prior to final adoption of the ordinance. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick and a second.
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through Q excluding items E and M? Okay, Deputy Director Carney and a second, Commissioner Schick, roll call, please.
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion? Thank you.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen E? Okay, Deputy Director Carney and a second, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Abstain.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Motion to adopt Resolution fourteen M.
Second.
Commissioner Schick and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Number fifteen, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bids. The county, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interests. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Schick with a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney? Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Number sixteen, Financial. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List A, which is August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four's Bills List?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Schick with a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
B, Payment of Bills List B, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List B? Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
C, Resolution Payment of Bills List C, September eleventh. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List C?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and a second, Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, Personnel, we have none, eighteen administrative report.
Thank you, Commissioner Director. Real quick, we're gonna, we're gonna get busy here, it's this time of year. So all the department heads have made all their submittals to the budget. So tis the season. So we'll be scheduling hearings here very shortly, or meetings, the initial meetings with all the department heads to present to the liaisons and to the council of their respective areas the budgets for the next year. We're also getting busy, three people in the audience are gonna be very pleased to hear this. We've started the negotiations with the Prosecutor's Unit, which we're gonna recommence here in the next couple of weeks. And in the next couple of weeks, we have corrections and the Sheriff's Office contracts coming up. So we have three PBA contracts that are gonna sunset in December. So we're gonna get real busy, real quick, the second half of this year, or the fourth quarter of this year. I'm really excited that September twenty-third and twenty-fourth, I'll be conducting a series of leadership trainings for our department heads, division heads, supervisors, wants-to-be supervisors, people being looked to be brought up for the next generation. A leadership class called Situational Leadership. I have a master's certificate in situational leadership that I earned from Dr. Ken Blanchard a long time ago. And I have taught over eight hundred classes of this throughout Alcoa. And it's a very good, I'm teaching the basic part of this. It gives the supervisor a very good basic understanding of applying the appropriate leadership style to the competency, the demonstrated competency of the employees. It gives them a good grounding on how to do that. And I'm very excited about being able to do that for us here, too. So that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. County Council Report.
I have no report.
Thank you. Okay, twenty, any unfinished business? Any new business? Sure.
In your letter that was emailed to you, we weren't able to take it on the agenda, is the request for Division of Senior Services to apply for an age-friendly community who's planning process grant the amount of seventy thousand dollars. This will offset costs of staff and allow us to do the AARP, Age Friendly Community Planning Application Process to assess what the needs are for aging population and how we can do a five-year plan to help meet those needs. It would be then implemented into our area plan contract that we have to do every few years and that needs assessment.
Okay.
So I'm asking for permission for us to apply for that grant.
Okay.
And there's no county match.
Okay, so that's, so that's good. Okay, so I would like to personally make the motion to approve this so that you guys can get started on it. Approve the application, authorize the application. Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Again, thank you, Lorraine, for all you do for the seniors.
If we get the grant and after we do this process, then we are able to say that Sussex County is age-friendly.
Yes, that's awesome.
We can't take that claim because it's an AARP statement, so.
That'd be exciting, thank you. Okay, number twenty-two, Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner Schick and a second. Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stay in, motion carries, the floor is open.
My name is David Hanson, Township Committeeman in Hampton Township. I'm also the Executive Vice President of the Hampton Township Fire and Rescue Department. I want to thank the Commissioners for passing fourteen J, allowing us to close down Tubby County Grounds for the Fireman's Inspection Parade that's gonna be on October fifth. Our President has sent you all, I believe, emails already and written invitations. We can get back to him by the twentieth, I believe it is. That way we'll know how many seats to put on the observation stand towards the end of the parade.
Thank you.
And you're also welcome to come to the festivities that are gonna be happening at Township Park.
Thank you, I think our clerk was gonna RSVP for the board, she's finding out.
I did, I sent out an email saying I could have a definite proxy by DM.
The President is away on business and he must be in a place where there is no internet because I haven't been able to contact him.
Fireman's Convention, right? Oh, he's not at the Fireman's Convention.
He's in West Virginia. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Sandy Hall, Lake, New Jersey. Just an update to where the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund is right now. Recently Congressman Goddard Connor added an amendment to H R eight nine nine eight saying that we should not have a national park, a designation for the area. It just passed in the House, and what does this mean? He said if it goes under the Senate, this deal is pretty much done. Very grateful for his participation, his support in doing this. Also, I just got a letter today from Lou Casatelli, who's legislative aide for our Representatives in Trenton, A R one thirty-three, which also says no national park in D'Zer. Is recommended to go up, go to Tourism, Gaming, and the Arts Committee, and hopefully we'll see that passed as well. If that passes in the Senate, it means New Jersey will take a formal opposition to the Alliance's proposal to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area. And the point is, you don't start doing something like this at the top, you start at the bottom and you work your way up. So for every municipality, for every county representative, for our county representatives here, I just want to say thank you for your unwavering and continued support. We have made great strides and we never could have done it without you guys helping us out and supporting us, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work on the cause, no one's worked harder.
County Attorney, Hampton Township. Here we are again, another meeting, and the same situation still is going on. And at this point in time, there are at least two members of Congress who have called for investigations of stolen baller, possible IRS ruling for lying on tax returns. And apparently Mr. Hayden told us at the last meeting that there was some kind of ethics complaint about him. Obviously, he would not have the decency to resign. So I just want to say, I guarantee him that he will not be re-elected after the shame he has brought onto himself, his friends, family, and the rest of the county. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dimitri Gattana, Stillwater, New Jersey. I'm coming here to hope to find answers about the situation that's happening in front of our home. We live in Stillwater, New Jersey, it's peaceful rural town that now has two traffic lights sitting right in front of my home. And very little has happened since November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, when the decision was made by the County Engineers Office to install these traffic lights. Just wanted to run this through you, again, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, there was a traffic accident, there was a person driving a vehicle that was arrested for DWI. He decided to fall out of her vehicle and break down my front door and end up on my couch and get arrested on that couch. So moving to Stillwater, when people move here, they move here for peace, by serenity, nature, the whole bit. And now we have a break-in, we have the DWI thing, and now we have two traffic lights. And the two traffic light decision was made very quickly. On November the sixth, a memo was prepared, which was, this is not even counting the weekends. Very quick decision to put two traffic lights based on a lot of different engineering jargon, but mostly because they claimed there were several accidents that happened in front of the block. He puts in a report that says fifteen accidents took place since two thousand and six. Of those fifteen accidents, twelve of them were deer strikes, three of them were possibly in front of my home. And two of those accidents of the three that were cited were during a snow then, and one was doing a rain vent. And a drunk driver has caused a lot of problems for us. I mean, we have lots of noise, trash, we have all kinds of activity in front of our home. There's a nice drone shot with all the traffic in front of our home. This is the view from our driveway. And this is just me waiting to get into my driveway in a rural community. It's not right, it's just not right. And when I try to get information, the lawyer's office doesn't want to give us any information through the Oprah process. We write emails, it's very responsive. Commissioner Carney's been very communicative, he's been very open and honest with us, I believe, giving me information when it's available to him. But this can't stand, it just can't stand. I mean, I know that people want to keep people safe, but has anybody thought about our safety? Forget about our first-world problems, we can't even pull out of our driveway safely because people blow through the light. There's no way that this can continue, and I really hope somebody can help us out here, I really do hope.
Thank you, we'll follow up and have Commissioner Deputy Director Carney email you again?
Yeah, so, just to get to you, and I know I didn't get back to you, but he'll cover all his way when you emailed me last. He just gets back and he's obviously busy with some other things, I'd say yours is important, I don't mean to say that. But I'll talk to him tomorrow and see where we're at. I'll be honest with you, I don't think we've gotten anywhere. You know, I know the engineer came out, I think we sent you that information. I think we're just waiting for them to come up with a plan. Again, I build bridges, and I know you don't want to hear this, but that is such a sensitive area with your wetlands, with it being a historic area, and it's a long bridge, it really is. I don't want to, you know, get your hopes up by any means, but it just, I know it sucks, I get that, because I drive past there. I just, I don't, I don't have an answer, and again, I'm not an engineer either, but.
People are telling me now that the engineer came out to see folks in town and told them that they want to take our property by their domain.
Yeah.
Which equals legal fees for us. So now I have a broken-down door, I have traffic lights, traffic, and now I gotta pay lawyers to defend my property. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of, kind of.
Yeah, that is a good rumor there.
Yeah, it really is.
That's, that's, yeah, I wouldn't worry about that one, that's.
Haven't heard that.
Yeah, that's not, that's ridiculous. My understanding is that bridge will go right in the same spot and only, not only because, one of the reasons is because you have that wetlands restriction. So that alone tells me, no way, and that's from twenty-five years of experience of building bridges.
First of all, I do appreciate all your help.
Yeah. And we'll get back to you, even if it's the same thing, at least we'll give you someone an answer.
Thank you, Chris takes his liaison responsibility very seriously when it comes to the roads. Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number twenty-three, Reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. We have no executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Six forty-six.